For our invocation speaker, Pastor Steve Bond, welcome Pastor.
Thank you. I'd just like to invite you all this weekend. We have Colin Kaepernick and Virgil Green coming to speak at Summit. It's gonna be a pretty fantastic weekend. Father, we give you thanks this afternoon for the opportunity to gather here, and I do pray for wisdom for this group of decision-makers. Father, I pray that every word that's spoken here this afternoon would be tempered with grace, filled with kindness and clarity. Father, we pray for truth, we pray for your guidance in all that happens, and especially, Father, that you would be honored. Thank you, Father. We commit this meeting to you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Do you remain standing, please? Mr. Kerrigan, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll bear with me today, I've got a cold and do the best I can, and I'm working off a couple of screens too, so if I make a mistake, it's a mistake. Comments from the public? I do not have any cards. Would anybody like to speak at this time? Okay, see none, we'll bring you back to the council. It says, "Recommendation to approve the minutes of," but we don't have any, do we? No. Announcements, presentation, recognition items. 4.1 is "Presentation of Newly Merged Northern Nevada Chamber of Commerce." Trey and Mr. Stevens, welcome. You know, did I not do the agenda? Okay, before we get started, okay, we have a motion from Councilman Schmidt. A second from Councilman Ratty. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes and answers me. And we can use the screen, I guess, up there. They'll hook it up for us. Okay.
Thank you very much, Councilman. My name is Randy Brown, and it's my honor to serve as the chairman of the chamber. The chamber is the newly formed combination of the former Northern Nevada Chamber of Commerce and the Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce. And I want to begin by thanking the City of Sparks for its membership and commitment to the chamber. You all have been supportive for more than several decades, so we do appreciate the partnership. Our organization is just roughly 100 days old. We put the two organizations together at the beginning of October. We still have two offices, one located at the Legends at Sparks Marina, one located in downtown Reno. All of this occurred, we started talks back in 2010, but we actually made the culmination in October of 2011. The chamber is here really to create an environment that will encourage sustainable economic growth, real cohesive unity between the community and businesses, and really about job creation and quality of life. You know, we've really talked to other nonprofits, we've talked to government organizations about the benefits of combining resources where it makes sense. We're proud to say that it really made sense for this organization. The chamber represents 2,200 members today and thousands of individuals. We have a staff of about 13 folks, split between the Reno and Sparks offices. So we're proud to be the premier business organization for our community. Joining us today are Lynn Stevens, the CEO and Executive Director of the organization, also Trey Abney, who's the Chamber's Director of Government Relations, as well as Grant Sims, who's the Chairman of the Business Advocacy Council at the chamber. And Lynn's gonna spend a few minutes just explaining sort of some of the programs the chamber offers.
Good afternoon. It's nice to be in front of you again, and I too want to echo my thanks to the chamber and to Tormark and for all the help that you have given us over the years. And I'm really, really pleased to say that as we see this growth, we see a bringing together of two communities, two different cultures, but more importantly, a chamber that provides really for its business members an opportunity to have a stronger say and a stronger presence in our community, and I think that's very important. With the merger, as we all know, two years ago, little over two years ago, the Sparks, then Sparks Chamber merged with the Hispanic Chamber, and now with the combined three chambers, we look forward to even serving our members in a much more positive and even stronger way, and that is through the events and programs that we have. And during this time, during these last six months of merging our chamber, we have looked at all of our events and programs, and we feel that there is a strong need for many of the programs and events that we have, such as Star Spangled Sparks, that has been in the Sparks community for over 12 years now, and along with other programs that we have merged together, like the upcoming Directions program that encompasses, again, Northern Nevada and all of really the business constituents that we have and the importance that we have with the programs leading up to our Business Action Council, as well as our PAC, which is our console to work with all the legislation and things that are going on in our community. And today I also have here Trey Abney and Grant Sims, who represent those two consuls, and if there were any questions, those two would be happy to answer them for you. But I think the message that we wanted to get to, to all of you today, is that combining two chambers really provides strength, we feel, and we look forward to working in both communities to strengthen our association, not only with the consuls, but also with our business community. So thank you for having us today.
Okay. Any questions? Well, I think it was long overdue. It's frank numbers, so 2,200 people, that's pretty darn good. So, thank you to you guys. Thank you. Okay, 4.2, update from the brand leadership team. How are you?
Good. Yeah, how are you?
Good.
Yeah, I'm Craig Knutson with Tanmar Construction, and also the Chairman of the brand leadership team for year two. And I just want to give you an update as to where we're at. Adam's gonna help me run the computer, because I'm not... Can I sit here or can I sit there? Right, yeah, first off, what I'd like to do is thank the council and the Tormark Committee and Ron and Ron, who are also, or that are on the Tormark Committee, for supporting us and allowing us to move forward with a lot of the things that were outlined in the tasks that were set up in the DDI report that was done. One of the things, we have a little short slideshow to do, just to kind of show you where we're at and what we've been doing the last year. But one of the things that we've done, there was approximately 26 items that were in the tasks for the DDI report, and so far in the last three years, mainly in the last two years, we've done close to 22 of those. We're either working on them, or have completed those tasks. So we're well ahead of the schedule, because it was a four-year, five-year task orientation on that whole thing, so that's really been a great accomplishment as far as the brand leadership team goes. The other thing I'd like to do, I'd like to thank all the volunteers that were, that have been on the committee for the last three years. I'll just quickly go through their names. Beth with the Nugget, Dennis with the Legends, Tom with Great Basin Brewery, Joe with, actually, I'm not sure what he's doing right now, but Seth with Access Passes. There's quite a few volunteers that have been on the committee over the years. The organizations, the chamber, Lynn, Trey, Jennifer with the RCVA, Anthea with Sparks Museum, they've all been strong supporters and have been at all the meetings and really helped us a lot in pursuing the goals that we're outlining in the DDI report. Also staff with Adam and all of his folks over there, Tracy and everybody. So it's been a great, great three years, and hopefully we can move forward with this year. Our little slideshow's gonna kind of present what we've done up to this date. We did start, one of the things that isn't on the slideshow, we opened up the website. That was May of this year. And with that, we started doing a campaign advertising, campaign advertising in which we had done outdoor billboards. We had three ads promoting the city events on Interstate 80. There was also billboards, digital billboards throughout the city. The airport had a backlit billboard there, which was, I think, a great with the new QR codes. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the QR codes, but that's a new website access type deal, so that was pretty neat. Kiosk panels down at Victorian Square, and I believe we also did the Marina, too. We had kiosks down Marina. So just a lot of pop and a lot of stuff going on with all the events. We had five full-page ads, I believe, or six full-page ads that we'd done on the RGJ on the Sunday articles last summer during the event timeframes. And all this has really been, you know, obviously supported with the Tormark funding and the city staff and everything else, but the support of the BLT's been great with people who can have connections and stuff. Wayfinding, we had hired a consulting firm to come up with a wayfinding system, and that's been completed. And actually, I saw that there was a RFP out that's due on February 7th for the wayfinding signs, so we'll get that put together hopefully by spring before the event season starts, so we'll have good wayfinding signs. This is the sign diagram that we came up with.
Are they different colors, Greg?
Yeah, they will be, they'll be different colors. As you see, the Golden Eagle Park is kind of a gold color, and then we have the red for Victorian Square. As you get into the areas of the districts, the three districts that we have, then they'll have, as you can see on this bottom portion of the program, arena outlet will be the blue, the Victorian Square will be more of an amber-red-orange color there. So, yeah, they'll all have directional signs on the parkways and on Pyramid, Sparks, Disk Drive, those kinds of things. Familiarization tour, we did another familiarization tour this year, which I think was a great success. We had it during the rib cook-off, and we had a lot of responses from people from back east, and Tracy's been in contact with those guys, and I believe there's some pretty substantial events coming up, and I think she had presented that to you guys in December. I think that's some big stuff that is gonna happen this summer. That fam tour, you know, turned out well, and a lot of you guys were attending that. And Adam is gonna do a presentation. We've got a new thing out right now. It's the mobile app, which is just getting launched, so I'm gonna let Adam take off with that. If you have any questions, I'm open for questions.
Are you gonna do the ads again this year, the full-page ads?
Yes, we're working with Tormark and trying to come up with some, you know, ads, some of the ones we have, some of the ones we might not do, where we're having discussions with.
I thought those were very effective. The ones at the airport are great.
I believe so. Anyway, we've got great deals on those. It was a, we've definitely got some good pricing.
And for those in the audience that don't know this, this group of people are strictly volunteers, and the work they do is incredible, and working together. So we do appreciate that, you know that.
Thank you.
Any questions? I think he's timing out on me.
Turning it off.
Any questions, comments for Craig? That's actually the next presentation.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so you can stay right there, Adam, because we're gonna do the next one.
Sure.
Okay, "Presentation and Induction of the City of Sparks Mobile Application."
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Protempore, council members, Mr. Adams, Mr. Kerrigan. Adam Mayberry, I'm the Community Relations Manager, and I wanted to give you a quick overview on a new city application. I'm really proud to report to you, this is the first local government application of this kind in the entire state of Nevada, for any city or county for that matter, so we're real pleased to be the leader in that regard. Of course, we want to thank the city's tourism and marketing committee, who provided the funding, along with the blessing of the entire city council. The app costs $17,500. Brand leadership team supported our effort, spearheaded the effort, and wanna, really want to appreciate and show my, express my appreciation to RKPR, who coordinated a lot of the work. David Taylor and Renell Klingensmith are in the audience. If you could just stand up or wave your hand. And Tony Lockard is the Principal for InfoTech. Tony, you're in the audience too, I believe. Tony owns the company that produces the app for us. His other clients include Reno Air Races, Art Town, even the United States Army, so they've been in the business for a while. And this is a start for us. This is essentially something we can build on, and it's primarily an informational resource. This is an iPhone. Most of you have iPhones or Androids in some cases, Blackberries. The Android and the BlackBerry version of the app will be available very soon, but if you have an iPhone...
I think everybody in the audience should get their iPhones out now and get this app. He'll lead you right through.
That's right. I'm gonna zoom in a little bit. And I, this is the icon for the application. Application comes up, it shows the current weather conditions, has a button for visiting, which you can click, and the information that comes up actually feeds to the city's widget. I know it's a little difficult to see, but visitors or residents can pull information on all the dining or shopping or places, et cetera, on this particular menu. There's also an area map, a variety of landmarks and attractions in the City of Sparks. You can move it around. Click on one particular, looking at Victorian Square, and it'll show the address. Also, the Sparks softball standings are also available on the application. The softball links on the city's website is probably the most frequently visited portion of our website, so we thought it was important to provide the rankings, or the standings, rather, for the softball teams. Then on the bottom, there are a variety of other features. This is a link for, you can post Facebook updates and use Twitter, or post a picture on the city's Flickr page if you want, if you want to. This is the event calendar, where we can add to this and build upon the, all the events that are taking place in the City of Sparks. This feature is unique. This is probably the most popular enhancement for applications in 2012. It's the Around Me, it's an augmented reality, where you can use it similar to a camera, and you can, it's difficult to demonstrate in this particular form, but you can, you can point at that in front of you, 360 degrees, and it'll come up with a variety of icons within a 12-mile radius of all the attractions and special event venues or places to visit in the city. It's a very, it's done by GPS technology, it's a very fun, interactive feature. And of course, there's, this is a more section of the variety of information for, primarily for visitors in this case, citizens, if they want to send a request, they see a code enforcement issue, for instance, they can send a request through this mobile app. The Sparks News will become popular with a variety of press releases and information on the city. Also some information about the history of the City of Sparks, information on city government, the bios of the mayor, council members, pictures, if you need to contact the city, you can send an email, and of course, there's a, also the address and phone number for the city. So that's a very quick, broad-stroke overview of the application that we wanted to provide here. Happy to take any questions and appreciate the continued support. Thank you.
Any questions? Julia?
Just comment.
Okay.
Cool. And followed up by, I just, Adam, you wear so many hats for the city, and you just keep these things moving along from the staff perspective, so I want to say thank you to you again, because I just think we just keep plugging along on all these things. I want to thank the Tormark Committee and for the leadership that they're showing. And Craig, same thing, I know how many volunteer hours you're putting into this, same with all the members of the committee, but I know your leadership has been important to this effort, so just a sincere thank you that we're doing some of these really fun things that bring attention to the city.
Thank you for the kind words, and, but honestly, it's really a team effort with the brand leadership team, Tracy and her team, and the variety of people. Thank you very much.
Tracy, too, sorry. I know how much you guys do.
You know, in two or three years ago, the Tormark Committee took a different direction from what we were doing year in, year out, and maybe, Mr. Schmidt, I know you're up next, could you shed a little light on that?
Sure. I also wanted to say thank you to Craig and Adam and all of staff and the BLT for what you've done the last two years. I know 2011, this is a product of all the work in 2011, and 2011, the two major electronic things was the redo of the website, great job on that, it's much easier to use, and then the first mobile app. You said it, there's not another city or county out there in the state right now doing it, and this shows the commitment from the City of Sparks on the investment we're making for, in our tourism program. And I think between this and our, in the website, we've put in about $70,000 this year from Tormark money, and so that's a great, great use of money, great use of the future we're looking at, and I think we're gonna enjoy many years of return on these investments we're making. Did I cover what you're looking for?
Yes.
So thank you to everybody, I appreciate it, and look forward to seeing the numbers come on out. So everybody out there, download it, because we're gonna track you and we're gonna send you information and emails and fill up your spam box. No, just kidding, so.
Thank you. Mr. Lawson? Thank you all.
I was curious, Adam, is when is the Android app coming?
Oh, um...
For us, you know, guys who don't count as much as iPhone users.
First quarter of this year. I know that's pretty vague, but I'll tell you what, as soon as it becomes available, I'll let you know. I'm thinking maybe, Tony, a couple of weeks?
Yeah, probably less than that.
Okay. Calendar year. Calendar year.
Calendar year, yes.
Because we're in that quarter now.
2012, right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments? Thank you, Adam. Thank you. Okay. 4.4, "Presentation by the Sparks Heritage Museum." Anthea, how are you?
Good. This movie's short. Let's see if I can figure out how to get in here. Okay. I'm gonna try and not keep you guys too long. Anthea Humphries, Executive Director of the Sparks Heritage Museum. During World War II, the community of Sparks banded together to raise $600,000 in order to purchase a B-25 bomber named the Spirit of Sparks. That same community spirit still exists today and is no better exemplified than in the past year at the Sparks Heritage Museum. A project which a year ago seemed doomed to failure after loss of funding is now a shining example of the community camaraderie for which Sparks is famous. As you will remember, in October 2010, the state treasurer announced that no bonds were to be sold due to the economy. The museum had received one grant for $105,000 and was relying on a second Commission of Cultural Affairs grant to complete the upstairs. Literally weeks before Phase Two was scheduled to begin, a $140,000 CCA grant was withdrawn, and this is what we were left with. The board reacted quickly. A plea to the community was made. I went out knocking door to door, and the response was overwhelming. Volunteers arrived to perform labor, people of all ages and backgrounds. Electrical supplies were donated, insulation, plastering materials, and paint. All of these items were donated 100% to the museum. Thanks to the board, cash was raised for things we couldn't get donated, like the light fixtures and the historically accurate front door. We used the very last of the funds from the first grant to buy historically accurate flooring. Thanks to all the contributions that were made, we managed to have enough money to be able to buy flooring. Everybody that was asked to contributed what they could. I lost track of how many people worked on this project the day a whole crew arrived from the Nevada Woodchucks. One of the biggest donations of all, not to downplay the importance of all of the other ones, was the professional installation of our traditional-style real wood floor. I had received quotes for the labor ranging from $10,000 to $12,000, and the installation was donated 100%. There's a complete list of all the donations in the printed version of the annual report, which I believe is in your packet. We closed out the first $105,000 CCA grant with $108,000 in matching funds, thanks to the community contributions. Thanks to the community joining forces during times reminiscent of the Great Depression, ironically when the building was first built, Phase Two was completed in October of 2011, and Sparks now has a cultural center upstairs at the museum. The Victorian Square merchants donated food and drinks on November 3rd to help us thank everyone who was involved in the project. I've lived all over the world and have never seen a community pull together the way that they do here in Sparks. It really, like, it really has been awe-inspiring, the way the people have just jumped in and helped. Every single person who I asked and the board asked to help did, in one way or another. People donated what they could. So that's the really good news. The bad news is the museum continues to operate at a loss. We rely completely on donations, admission fees, and memberships to cover our operating expenses. Even with all of the community support, there just isn't a lot of cash being donated to cover operating expenses. The hopes are that with our new cultural center, we will be able to offer more programming, giving people more reasons to join and become members, and ultimately generate more income in the upcoming year. The good news is that we're moving in the right direction. During the 2010-2011 fiscal year, the museum decreased its operating deficit by 30% compared to the previous fiscal year. There was a 23% increase in operating revenue while we decreased expenses by 7%. Visitors to the museum complex, including the train and schoolhouse, has almost doubled in the last 12 months, and we have seen a gradual increase in the percentage of visitors from our area, with 42% coming from outside of Sparks and Reno compared to 35% in 2008. The increase in visitation is due in part to two significant things. First, since the train was restored in December 2010, the museum has been able to keep it open every single weekend in 2011. Excluding the last, excluding the construction, in the last 12 months, volunteers have logged over 6,000 hours keeping the museum and the train operating and open. The second thing that has increased in, I'm kidding, the second thing that has increased visitation was the introduction of interactive technology with the Sparks in Space exhibit, which focused on the role of Sparks in getting the first man to the moon. Visitors to the museum complex are staying an estimated 45 minutes to an hour longer than previously, and we credit this to the introduction of the interactive technology and the opening of the train. Although it feels a little bit like the Flintstones meeting the Jetsons, the museum is not only moving towards things like a downloadable museum-specific app, but we are also in the process of digitizing our entire collection. I continue to be an appointee on both the State Digitization Steering Committee and the State Historic Records Advisory Board, which keeps us abreast of new trends in the field. As budgets for education continue to be cut, the role of places like museums in educating our youth becomes even more important. Education is at the core of the museum's mission. We continue to offer free school tours and plan to expand our youth programming through partnerships with nonprofits such as the Silver State Young Chautauqua and the Challenger Learning Center of Northern Nevada. In 2012, there will be an increased focus on added-value programming with things such as Irish dancers and bagpipe players to complement the upcoming Celtic Heritage exhibit. Our lecture series kicks off this Thursday with a three-part program called Nevada Revisited with Fred Horlacher. The display committee is continually upgrading the exhibits, and we are taking preliminary steps through our digitization efforts to incorporate iPads throughout the museum. New fundraisers are planned, including Mystery on the Sparks Express and the Victorian Fashion Show and Tea Party. And we're also aiming to do either an Oktoberfest or a Western Festival the first weekend in October. And then last but last not least, thanks for donation from Matthew Mitten at Inventive Web Design, we should have a new webpage up and running in the next month or two. And I couldn't figure out how to get it onto the PowerPoint. If I can get online, I can show you all. But, anyway, I found an old newspaper article from about 15 years ago entitled "The Little Museum That Could." I'm a firm believer in the power of positive thought, and with all the positive energy that has surrounded the museum this last year, the tremendous community pride and the ever-present spirit of Sparks, I am certain we will survive through this economic downturn and become one of the most happening places in Sparks. Thank you to the city for your continued support.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Lawson?
Well, I've been through the train and the new addition, and they both look wonderful. And it's good to see, I was downtown this weekend and saw some people in the train doing a tour with your conductor, and it's good to see action down there, and you've done an excellent job of kind of holding this whole thing together. I know it's been difficult, but you're doing a great job. Keep it up.
I think it's persistence. It's paying off, because you've done a lot of work down there. Mr. Horlacher, I saw you...
Mr. Horlacher, I saw you, are you going to give one of your famous speeches like you did out of Greed and your history?
I don't know if it's that famous.
You're pretty famous over there, I can tell you. So, be looking forward to that. You know, this community does step up to the plate. That's what this is all about, and right now, I guess if it's labor and materials that they can donate, that's what you get, and, you know, it's one of the reasons I love this place.
Yeah.
Mr. Ratty?
Again, I mean, there's just been so much progress in the last two years, and I think the Board of Directors and you are largely responsible for really making this a huge asset to the community, so again, thank you. For anybody who's watching out there, I'll throw out a challenge. I would be happy to be the first donor, and I'd like to challenge anybody who ever carved an apple into the shape of a head on a ghost towner's trip from a Reed High School class...
See, you are famous.
To...
Yeah, an apple for everybody.
An apple for everybody, to make a donation to the museum this year. Doesn't have to be big, $5, $10, $25, but it makes a difference, and I know that that must be thousands of people who have carved those apples. So, if people are out there and they can make a small donation, I'll ask on your behalf because it's important and it's a great anchor in downtown Sparks, and I'd like to see it continue. And they would do that, how? Thank you. How would they make a donation?
Well, you can either send us a check, and within the next month, you should be able to do it online with our new, on our new webpage.
So, Sparks Heritage Museum?
Yeah, and we also set up a RAZU page with that Nevada's Big Give, so if you go to razu/sparxmuseum, you can donate online.
Okay. How about a phone number for people?
775-355-1144.
Great.
Okay. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Thanks.
Okay, move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull one? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve the consent items, 5.1 through 5.4.
We have a motion, and Mr. Kerrigan. We have a second from Mr. Kerrigan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, we can vote on the screen. Go ahead and vote. Sorry, I'm not used to that. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so we'll go to general business, 6.1, Consideration of Possible Approval of Mayor's Recommendation of Reappointment to the Sparks Planning Commission. And his recommended is Mitch Nowicki, and he's been on the planning commission. Is Mitch here? Okay. Any discussion? Looking for a motion? Mr. Kerrigan?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mitch Nowicki to the Sparks Planning Commission.
We have a motion, Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
And we have a second from Mr. Schmidt. Any further discussion? Passes unanimously. 6.2, Consideration of Possible Adoption of Resolution Number 3213, A Resolution in Support of Maintaining Operations at the Reno Processing and Distribution Center.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Adams, Mr. Carey, Adam Mayberry, your Community Relations Manager. This is a resolution in support of the United States Postal Service's Distribution, Processing and Distribution Center located in Reno. As you know, there's been some discussion of closing this facility down. It could have significant adverse impacts on not only jobs, but Sparks businesses, many of which are the distribution and logistics business. So, resolution, the item was brought forward today at the request of Councilwoman Ratty, and we presented for your approval.
Okay, Ms. Ratty, did you...
I asked to bring this forward in that that processing center is critical to the quality of mail service for the citizens of our region. In addition, it would be a big hit in terms of a number of jobs for our community at a time when that would be particularly devastating. We wouldn't be the first there. City of Reno has passed a similar resolution, and we'd like to move forward to federal level with the united front in our community, saying that this is an important asset for our community that we don't want to lose.
Aren't the closings put on hold for now?
My understanding is that we're going to reconsider it, and, well, till May. That's my understanding.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
Move to approve the resolution as presented.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Kerrigan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Adam.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. 6.3, Consideration and Possible Approval of Reimbursement to the City of Reno in the amount of $1,140,393.61 for Sparks' share of a bid award to Auburn Constructors. Hello there. How are you?
Very good, sir. Mr. Protem, council members, I'm David Brichetta, the Acting Plant Manager. The request in front of you today is to be a signatory to the contract between the City of Reno and Auburn Constructors for electrical upgrades at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, or TUMWORF, and to authorize the reimbursement to the City of Reno for Sparks' share of the bid award. The electrical upgrades are for enhancements of two transformers, the switchgear, and low-voltage distribution centers associated with those transformers. Pursuant to the inter-local agreement between Reno and Sparks, Reno manages the capital improvement projects at TUMWORF. Reno bid the project and received three bids: Auburn Constructors, Sierra, Central Sierra Electric Company, and Nelson Electric, of which two of the bids were determined to be responsive, and that's Auburn Constructors and Sierra, Central Sierra Electric Company. Of those two, Auburn Constructors was the lowest bid in the amount of $3,635,300. Therefore, Sparks' share is $1,140,393.61. The project was a component of TUMWORF's approved five-year capital improvement plan. Reno approved the contract at their council meeting on December 14th.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Questions or comments? Mr. Lawson?
Just for clarity, where's the money coming from? The 1.1 million?
It's coming out of the funds in the capital improvement plan for TUMWORF, for the Truckee Meadows.
And that's been budgeted for already?
Yes, sir.
And just to clarify, the age of the plant?
The age of the plant is 46 years old.
So, it's time to do some upgrading?
Yes, sir. There was a study done that supports this, the electrical upgrades.
Good. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. How much was Nelson's electric bid?
Their bid was about 1.2% lower than Auburn Constructors, but they were considered non-responsive.
I understand. I mean, I know the bidding process on that, so basically, we're saying we're going to be paying 1.2% for an out-of-state company to come in and do the work. We already know the price, what an in-local, whatever the problem with the paperwork, it wasn't filed properly, I'm not sure what that was, but that's our cost difference of going someone out-of-state to in-state right now. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
And there was no way that this could be taken rebid?
The bid process spelled out in...
I understand. I'm just getting back to the point, it's just all about, you know, we've identified the costs, you know? It's $150,000, you know, for us to go out of the area, or whatever that number is, to have an out-of-state company come in and take our money and use those, you know? We know those employees are going to be coming in from California, they're not local employees going to be used. We know that, you know? When we sat down and looked at this thing, is there reason that can be looked at this, said there's reason to go ahead and rebid the process?
Mayor Protem, for the record, Neil Cruz, Deputy City Manager for Community Services. I think we concur, Councilman Schmidt, that this is an unfortunate situation. However, a valid bid was put out on the street, and we did have two responsive bidders. Unfortunately, the one who was local did not fill out the paperwork correctly and was essentially tossed from the process. I understand every point that you've made, but inasmuch as there's been a valid bid solicited, a valid bid provided, we're in a situation where the law would call upon us to not rebid. That would expose, I think, both the City of Reno and the City of Sparks to additional liability, to throw out valid bids in the name of...
What was the inconsistency in the bid?
Sir, if I may, the Reno projects are run by Reno, and...
Yes, I understand. I'm just curious, is this a minor, major inconsistency? What, did we forget to put in a date in, or did we forget the 1% contractors list that we've had so much issues with?
What I'd like to do is introduce Mr. Robert Lee, he's the Senior Civil Engineer for City of Reno, he's Project Manager for this project.
Welcome.
He can give you more details.
Robert Lee, Senior Civil Engineer with the City of Reno, and I'm the Project Engineer for the City of Reno. I'm the one that was present when the bids were opened. In Section 035 of the bid package, there's a requirement that the contractor submitting the bid list himself and the first-tier subcontractors. This was a change made to the contract documents, I understand, during the last legislative session. And it's clearly laid out in the first paragraph of the bid documents that each bid submitted must include the name of the prime contractor and each first-tier subcontractor. And Nelson Electric did not do that. The legal section, Reno's legal representative told me that we had to declare the bid by Nelson to be non-responsive, when the other two bids that we received were responsive.
Isn't there some argument that if they're listing their name in the first tier of subcontractors, they shouldn't have to do it in the second tier? Because we just upheld, we just did it, and that's why we voted on it, is that we didn't have to reject the bid, because if their name's on the beginning of it, that's what they... And I guess, I guess the big issue here is that, you know, two months ago, we had this issue with our own contractor, and we were led to believe that all the government bodies were getting together and trying to make sure the education process and standard process and everything was in place for this stuff, and it looks like we have it now.
Mr. Kerrigan? It's off.
You know, it's so long ago, I can't remember what I was going to say. I think part of what I was, somebody answered it, was this was the bid that was opened by Reno, not Sparks.
Right.
Okay? And so, I think the big thing here is that we might want to get our city attorney together with the city attorney in Reno, because Chet, weren't you working on this for us last time about, you know, the legality of it or the interpretation of it?
We did. We did.
Oh, okay.
If I may, Dan Maron, Contracts and Risk Manager, for the record. As been described here, this isn't necessarily about the first, the 5% list versus the 1% list, which is, I believe, where you're going, Mr. Smith. This would be listing themselves on the primary subcontractor list. The 5% list is required at the time of bid. That isn't something that we can overlook or bypass. In fact...
They did not list them on the 5%, and they should have.
Is that correct?
They did not.
Okay. Neither did they do it on the 1% list.
No.
Okay.
So, in this case, it would be my recommendation, if we were to have been the bidding agency, to recommend the same action. If they don't list themselves on the 5%, the law gives us no latitude whatsoever to bypass and award to them anyway. In fact, we will be bringing a project to you in the next meeting or two on a bid. We just opened this week where that very same thing happened for the City of Sparks. The dollar figures are much different, but same action is still occurring, and this isn't necessarily about the agencies getting their act together with respect to communication. There is still a large pool of contractors out there that aren't bidding public projects on a regular basis, and they're still running afoul of the new law.
Mr. Lawson?
From my own experience, I know that this, those documents are confusing and sometimes tough to deal with, but it is what it is, and you can read the directions. If you spend the time, you can figure out where you have to put your name in. And unfortunately, that cost Nelson this award with the bid, but I understand why it was done that way. I don't particularly think that's great law set forth by the state of Nevada, but it is what we have to deal with. And, you know, it's a costly mistake, obviously, and it's cost me some money for my company because of that, too, and bidding documents and not reading the whole thing correctly or all of the contract. I'm just sorry about that, but life goes on.
And I will say, as a guy that sits on the other side of the table when these things occur, the purchasing agents in this valley are available to answer these questions. If contractors are confused or befuddled about the process, we are there to help answer those questions and help them fill out the forms correctly, and that's where the benefits of the contractors needs to occur. It's not through any manner of the preference, it's the discussion of how best to navigate the process.
Mr. Kerrigan?
Dan, why don't you think about this? You know, I'm getting tired of, you know, there's an old saying, you know, RTFQ, you know, if you don't read the question, you know, you're going to... Can you possibly get together with the AGC and maybe hold a, some sort of an hour, a two-hour, you know, education session?
Absolutely.
For the local contractors and say, "This is how you do it," because I'm really getting tired of watching somebody lose because they don't know where to put their name.
Absolutely, and I can say that the local agency has been actually taking the lead on this particular issue. We've met with them three or four times since the law went into effect in July, trying to come up with a common interpretation of the rules, and that's where the agencies have really come down to where they are today, in that this is what's been adopted, this is how we as an agency are determining to interpret it. And I can say that the interpretation in the North has differed somewhat from agencies in the South, and we're getting over those hurdles, but I can say that the North definitely took the lead with respect to the law that's hurt the contractors today.
Yeah, because I'm sure the local companies are kind of upset that they are not in on a $3.6 million.
Of course.
I mean, that's a lot of money and put a lot of people to work, so, thanks.
Councilwoman Ratty?
Again, just sort of sympathy for everybody involved in how challenging the process is, whether you're the folks on the city side trying to figure out, and I'm sure when you open those documents and it's not there, it's disappointing for you as well, as well for the contractors who are trying to figure this process out. I just would like to say that we're having a retreat late in the month to, and one of the things we're going to be looking at is our legislative platform, and I hope that we'll come into that room ready to talk about how do we, what would we recommend from the local perspective to make sure that we can, make sure that jobs are getting to locals and to look at what preferences we could provide or how we could simplify these things so that locals aren't losing out on these jobs.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Looking for a motion? Councilwoman Ratty?
Move to approve that the council award the approval of reimbursement to the City of Reno for Sparks' share of the electrical upgrades in the amount of $1.14 million and some change, as in the agenda item.
How's that along with staff?
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Major.
Hey, easy, easy.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, please vote.
Old habits.
It passes four to one with Councilman Schmidt voting no. Okay, 6.4, Consideration of Possible Approval of Providing $32,275 to the Economic...
I wanted to thank Mr. Lee for coming over from the City of Reno. Thank you.
Well, in the pre-bid meeting, we are telling the contractors now specifically about these provisions. We're trying to make every attempt to ensure that they know that they know about.
Yeah, just thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Sorry.
Okay. 6.4, Consideration and Possible Approval of Providing $32,275 to EDON to assist the growth and recovery of Sparks and greater Reno Tahoe economy.
Good afternoon, again, Mayor Protem, board. Neil Cruz, Deputy City Manager for Community Services, here for the record. This is an annual item that you hear from EDON, and this dollar amount of $32,275 is the same amount that was requested and approved by this council last year. So, I thought that was worth warning out. That said, the new CEO of EDON is here and would like to take a few minutes of your time to make a presentation about where he's going with the organization. With that, I'll invite him down.
Come on down. Welcome.
Neil, real quick, there was a mistake on the agenda. I had him brief then, because when you read it, it's, you know, it is the same amount, but it said this represents a 3% increase over last year, so that, just for the record, isn't an increase. It's exactly the same.
For the record, it is exactly the same. Okay. Now, we need to wire me here. What can I plug in this presentation? It's a lot of electronics over here. I also have handouts, too.
So, how long have you been on board now?
A little over two months.
A little over two months.
Getting your feet wet.
We had it, and then it went away.
You know, before we get started, I just wanted to give my condolences to your alma mater, where it's 10th straight loss to Navy's. I know that's hard to swallow, so I just wanted to get that out there.
My hope is it won't be 11.
Yeah.
Just push right here.
And how is Detroit doing?
Detroit or...
Oh, that's the wrong guy. That's right, that was from...
Oh, yeah. No, I'm from Wisconsin.
RC, yes.
Or Colorado, depending on... Thank you.
You're welcome.
First of all, thank you for entertaining an opportunity to support our economic development efforts, specifically job creation for the region. I've got a very short presentation I pulled together here that talks about ROI, which is an important piece when you start dealing with taxpayer funding. And let's see, there you go. First off, as you probably know, I'm Mike Kazmersky, and I have been at EDON now for a little over two months as the CEO of the Economic Development Authority there. We get support in part by the state and the other municipalities in the area, as well as private funding support in order to achieve what we see as our primary mission here. And really, that's growing the economy through job creation. Overall, our 2011 numbers show about a 90-to-1 ROI for every dollar invested in the organization. $90 of economic activity have accrued in the region. But we don't do it without a lot of help, and that list of partners is probably just the top level. We have a lot of people that work closely with us to help us in attracting, retaining, and growing quality jobs. Just some performance numbers there, specifics on the 670 jobs, the amount of real estate taken up, there are $1.005 million, and the total economic impact. $40 million in county taxes and $19 million in total state taxes. More specifically, advanced logistics, manufacturing, financial services, and clean energy. What's most relevant to this presentation is the very bottom four companies located in the City of Sparks area. Those four, as most of you are aware of, 108 jobs and a for every dollar that was provided to EDON in support of our mission, we see $49 coming back to the City of Sparks in tax revenue. So if that was true and you gave us $10 million, you wouldn't have any budget problems. The reality is, obviously, that there is some direct return back to the community in tax revenue as we win these projects. And there's no question that we certainly appreciate that support. Some other things that we're looking... Things that were accomplished in 2011, we went and did some trips, working with brokers and site selection consultants. The Connector's website is something that we've started and continue to grow. A fairly aggressive push to brand ourselves in the national media and the Digital Ambassadors Program, which does an excellent job of promoting our good news among our many digital ambassadors. Of course, that's behind us now. And the companies we talked about, to date, eight companies, six new. We talked about the economic impact there, but I probably want to jump past this and look more focused towards where we're going. Our pipeline consists of 27 companies now, and really, we're working with a little over 100 active prospects. And every single one of them requires a certain amount of energy and resource, whether it's data exchange, they're actually visiting, or going out to visit them. The ones we have most aggressively are in these two, known as manufacturing and logistics, are two primary sectors, and certainly areas of growth here in Sparks. Our initiatives going forward, we are bringing on board probably the first part of February our Vision Business Retention and Expansion VP. And this person will focus exclusively on growing our existing employer base, keeping our companies that are here already here, help them work with the community, whether it's through the government entities, whether it's with workforce development issues, whether they have tax issues. Work with the companies to help them be more successful here. If they're in the expansion mode, help them achieve success and expansion so that they don't have to move somewhere else to expand. And that is really the third leg of economic development that EDON has not put enough energy into in the past. So we're adding that retention-expansion focus from an organizational perspective. The second up there, Entrepreneurship and University Liaison. Being new to the community, I can tell you that you hide the university very well, and that's probably something that we will try and move away from, because the university is a huge engine for economic growth. And so we're bringing on board a person to help us grow our entrepreneurial base, work with the research components of the university and the Desert Research Institute, and really more aggressively integrate what the university does with the businesses here in the region, whether it's intern program or helping our students coming out of the university find jobs here, so we don't have that talent go somewhere else. So more aggressive push on the Entrepreneurship and University Liaison. We're upgrading the websites. We've got strategic planning in the region, and Sean has been very helpful in helping bring together the teams that will do this. But we're looking at pulling together a strategic plan that includes this entire region, mostly the I-80 corridor, but we're working with N-NDA as well, if you look at Carson and the more rural areas, as to how do we attack this job creation need as a region? How do we do it better? EDON has a piece of that, but there are so many different parts. You saw that partner slide. So many different parts of this equation. How do we synchronize better our efforts to grow the economy? And so we'll lead the charge in that strategic plan. In fact, I just had someone in the office today from a management perspective on how we're going to do this, because it's going to be a tight timeline. We're looking at, in order to meet some of the state requirements, by the end of March, having a reasonably good plan, pull together, get some community input, public input, and move this thing forward, so we can start laying out some specific outcomes, resources, and metrics in measuring our success in these areas. We're working closely with the Chamber on many issues. The Chamber is a close partner of EDON, but has a different mission. So we work side by side in support of the business community. I mentioned N-NDA and their role, but we're working closely with them. In fact, there'll be an announcement soon on how we are... A memorandum of understanding of how we will work together going forward, and then certainly the market tours of the City of Sparks, which is an important part of integrating and understanding the product we have here. I would offer... I could probably spend four hours here talking about things we're trying to do, but that was really a brief summary of the focus, and I'd like to offer you the opportunity for any questions you might have.
Okay, Mr. Lawson.
Yes. Pardon me. The coalition with N-NDA, I understand that makes a lot of sense to me. Are you bringing in any of the other economic development organizations in the area? Is it just going to be you two?
Well, from a state perspective, there are two regional development authorities initially. So we want to make sure, as we report to the state, we synchronize what we're doing and don't have gaps or overlaps that waste resources. So that's really the focus of the MOU, is how do we work together? The other economic development entities in the region are part of the strategic planning effort. And so we'll bring everyone in the region together to help us lay out a strategic plan that we'll put resources towards. So it will be a regional effort.
It seems to me, in just investigating, there's... I don't... I can't even count how many different organizations there are that are all doing something a little different. It seems to me that everybody getting together would make a lot more sense than having 20 different efforts going in 20 different directions.
No question. And I think as a strategic plan at the state level comes out, they will be very specific on regional support. For example, EDON will put their primary focus on the I-80 corridor. And that, any economic development efforts in that region will be led by EDON. N-NDA has Carson City and some of the rural and ag requirements. If that overlaps into our region, N-NDA is the lead and will be supported by the state funding and given responsibility for those particular parts. So the thought is, rather than having 20 people try to do the same thing, let's focus in our areas of expertise. And while you have a region like the I-80 corridor where other economic development agencies and entities are there, we need to be all working together to meet the needs of that region. So I don't think we're there yet. I think the goal is in our strategic planning effort to start to integrate how we do that, and the state plan will in fact force that. If there's any state funding allocated, they're not going to allow for overlaps in, you know, 10 different agencies trying to do the same thing in the same place.
And just last question is, where are you guys getting your leads at for the new companies now?
Well, it's interesting. We ran the numbers, and I don't think we put that slide in here, but we get about 8% to 10% of our leads through the state. People contact the state, and the state will send it out to the RDAs. We get about 40% from our efforts to attract our EDON's outreach in trying to attract people, people that come through our website or respond to our marketing materials. So that's about 40%. The brokerage community is about 35%. Someone contacts, someone looks at a building, and they'll call us and say, "Someone's looking at this region. They need information on other things besides the building." And so we work with our broker community to get part of that. And then in all honesty, we're going to need a lot of help in growing that lead base. And part of our internal marketing focus is to get the community more involved in helping us identify leads so that we can follow up on them. Our existing industry, that retention-expansion piece that we haven't done very well so far, really can produce many leads as we start to work with our existing industry, and they talk about, "Hey, there's someone over here that you might want to look at," or "I used to live in this community, and a friend of mine is looking at relocating." And we then go out and visit that company and encourage them to come to this region. So there are a lot of ways to get the leads, but right now, the bulk of them come through our efforts, through the broker efforts, or through the state efforts.
Ms. Ready.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate your time. I had the opportunity, actually, to watch your, I think it was a full-hour interview on KMPB yesterday.
That didn't scare you, did it?
No, it's good. All good. And one of the things that you focused on was EDON's role in working with local government to smooth the way for some of your clients when they're trying to get a project through. And my experience with that since I've been on the council is it seems that that has become a relatively adversarial process. I know that you have an absolute full plate for the next several months as we're getting the region ready for the state plan and think that that should be the priority. But I'm wondering if you can put on your plate somewhere, as things even out a little bit, to really take a look at how that all works and see if we can't change that a little bit. We're, of course, here trying to make sure that we get a high-quality project in the City of Sparks. Our staff are trying to follow the rules that we put in front of them. And so I think if we could just get some folks in the room and really talk about, "How does that process work so that you're able to do what you want to do, which is put our best foot forward as a region and make people feel welcome, and we're able to do what we want to do, which is make sure that we get that high-quality company and a high-quality product in our region, something that we're going to live with for years to come?" So if we could get that, again, I understand not necessarily today, but at some point, I think new leadership is always a good opportunity to take a step back and look at some of those things, and would appreciate if you would do that.
Well, and it's actually incredibly important. It's one of our competitive advantages. While we tend to be fairly critical of ourselves, we have a very pro-business-government feel here in this community, as I measure other communities. People are positive about business, positive about growth, and I think you're exactly right. Sometimes it's just getting the right people in the room and talking through an issue and helping the company understand that they really are appreciated, and what they're asking for is something that the government side will do the best they can to accommodate. And really, it shouldn't be adversarial. It should be something that, how do we help each other out? Because the business that's growing, that's expanding, that says good things about the region only attracts more business.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? Okay, looking for a motion. Ms. Ready.
I move to approve a contribution in the amount of $32,275, a number I'm capable of managing, apparently, to the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada.
We have a motion. Mr. Lawson?
Second.
And we have a second by Mr. Lawson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, and welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to number 6.5. And I do have a public comment card, so I will open it up for public comment, first of all. Is it Joe Vella? Come on down, Joe. Make sure he has a seat so we can... Joe, Gina, and Bart. You have three minutes. And then identify yourself for the record, please.
Joe Vella, Contract Sweeping Vice President. We are here today on the behalf of PASA on 6.5, on the possible canceling of contract sweeping, on the sweeping of the City of Sparks. And we'd just like to have a few words on the avenues that we have taken with the City of Sparks to save the City of Sparks money. It is a new contract. It is a contract that has been brought up from the ground up, having to make maps, having to make routes, learning the city, and the obstacles that we had to come over on making it a successful transition. And it's been six months, and we've had monthly meetings with the City of Sparks Public Works Department. And, you know, it was some rocky roads in the beginning. And in the beginning of each one of those meetings, we have addressed every issue that has been brought to us on that day or prior to making it. And it is, you know, it's a long-term contract, and it's just, there's going to be some bumps in the roads on the aspects of that. And we have, in my mind, I feel we have accomplished all the bumps that we've come across that's been thrown at us. There were some things that were out of our hands on companies that we work with on the GPS issue, but in the overall, is the appearance of the city is clean, and we are saving the City of Sparks about $106,000 a year in revenue in our contracted services and the street sweeping programs. And I know I have some colleagues with me that would like to say a couple of words, if that's possible.
Sure.
And just to... My partner is Gina Vella in Business, AnSister.
Okay, Gina, sister and partner.
I'm a mayor and council. We really do appreciate your time. Oops. See the clock ticking.
You've got another three minutes.
Oh, good. Well, we're here, as I sit and I hear you guys talk, it's so important to you that you keep the money in your city and you're working with local people. And I feel it important, as I hear... And I want you to know that we have roots here. You know, we are now a part of your city. And when we came in, we did not bring California people to your city. We hired from within. We dug down deep and said, you know, "We want to keep the money here in Sparks." And we have a shop in Sparks. This isn't our first city taking it from in-house to contracted services. And change is hard. Change is difficult, and people often don't like it. But, you know, we thought by keeping everything within the city, you know, it would show goodwill efforts. And we did. Nobody's perfect, and Rome wasn't built in a day. And it takes a little while, especially on a city where residential sweeping is done every other month. So really, we're only on our third cycle of residential sweeping and working as a team with the garbage company, understanding the routes, and building routes from ground up with information that wasn't always accurate. Takes time. And the difference between a good company and a bad is the perseverance to not give up. And, you know, once we were faced with an obstacle that, hey, we did something wrong. We routed incorrectly. It was fixed immediately. Or, you know, human error, we didn't put a logo on our third sweeper. It was fixed within an hour. Education of the proper driving on one of our drivers, one of the employees did fail us, which I'm not... There's no sugar coat in it, but we found out we fixed it immediately. So the proactive efforts were there. And I just want... And I'm in hopes that you guys received my letter. And we want to be a part of the city, and we're here. We're in a lease for five years. You know, we're doing multiple other work within Sparks. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Bart, did you want to say a few words?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name's Bart Williams. I've been hired from Joe and Gina. I've been hired for, from Joe and Gina to run the division up here. As they said, I am local, I have been, I've been doing the sweeping probably 10 years. We started a company called Sweep Nevada way back when, it's progressed and sold. All my drivers are local Sparks, Reno natives, and I have just pretty much brought them along with us. We had had issues with a couple of drivers, like we said, we took care of it immediately. I've tried to, any concerns, problems, we've tried, you know, take care of it immediately. We'd like to, you know, just show a positive outlook and work ethic for you guys is all, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to talk on this subject? I'll close the public comment, bring it back to Neil.
I'm Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the city council, for the record, Neil Crutts, Deputy City Manager for Community Services. Here today with an item, asking you to terminate the contract with contract sweeping services. We have had a series of ongoing performance issues with the vendor. As they indicated, we have met with them roughly monthly. In staff's opinion, the issues that we have raised are, have not been resolved, even though they've been raised many times. And what I would ask for, from the council, is an opportunity to bring up Dan Hamlin, our Maintenance Operations Manager, and Ron Corman, our Fleet and Facilities Manager. They've got a short PowerPoint presentation that walks you through, and it's really done via a lot of photographs, that I think is going to lay out the work product that we have seen, and most particularly, the portions of the work product that we've taken issue with that we don't believe have been, have been adequately addressed. And based on that, our recommendation to you is that you do terminate the contract. But with that, I'll ask...
Okay, come on up, and why they're doing that, let me ask you a question. In their contract, was mapping the city part of their contract, or were we supposed to supply the maps for them?
Dan Hamlin, Maintenance Operations Manager. We helped Joe Vella with the maps, we produced the maps, and when he asked for them, we would put them up and give them to him. Joe came to our office roughly a week and a half, two weeks before they started the contract. We sat down in our conference room, I showed him the map that we have of our sweeping routes, said, "You can use this." He's elected to make his own. He asked for a smaller-sized map of that, of our map, we got him one, we set in that to office, and I highlighted all the main roads in the city of Sparks that he asked us to. And then, I showed him the areas in the city that are county, and we proceeded from there. He made the areas too big, so he called us and said, "I got to make the sweeping route smaller." He asked if I could provide him with some more maps that were blank, and I did. And I had Jason Knoblock, our GSI tech, deliver those maps to his office.
And as well as the GPS, that was included in the contract?
GPS, yes, on their sweepers, yes.
Okay. And did they fulfill that part of the contract?
As of December 29th, no. They're even on their last billing for December, their sweeper since October to that date, the 29th of December, there has been no sensor on that sweeper. They've just been sweeping for three months without one.
Okay, thank you.
Just, we're going to bring you up to the end.
Okay, any, Mr. Corman, go ahead.
I'm just going to work through this presentation, it's kind of long, so we'll go through it quickly. Most of the slides are self-explanatory.
You can't keep our attention, is that what it is?
We can.
And I'll pick out a couple of dates.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Carrigan?
Why, you just keep going through the picture, but answer me this question. If we vote today to terminate the contract, where do we go from there? Do we have to go out and rebid it? What's going to happen?
That would be our recommendation, is to go out and rebid it, and I believe, Dan, we can have that on the street in about two weeks. Yes.
And so, what's going to keep us from getting somebody else in here as a low bidder and going through this whole process again?
Doing what we're doing right here, documentation, having meetings with them.
No, I mean, what's going to stop, I mean, we can keep going on and on and on and on.
That's correct.
Okay. Because, you know, I want to hear from, you know, from the company, but I also say that, you know, this is new to them, I mean, are we not going to give them a break here and try to help them out?
Well, I felt by working with them and having five meetings with them and trying to, trying to resolve these issues, we would come to that, but obviously, we haven't.
Councilmember Carrigan, in terms of trying to avoid a similar outcome in the future, one of the things that we would certainly do right out of the gate is have any future vendor show us that they have every bit of the specified equipment on hand that they're planning to bring to the city of Sparks. I think we got out, started a little bit on good faith here, and here we are, still is the end of December, we're still working with equipment that doesn't meet the terms of the contract. So, there's a lesson that we learned, show us before you start to show us. But in terms of the level of service, there really isn't anything you can do than bring somebody on board, try them out, see how that level of service is, and then handle it accordingly. And what you'll see from staff, and have you hit any of the monthly notes that break the, break up the...
I've come across.
You see copies of the notes in there that we kind of used as placeholders to break up a series of issues that were raised, a meeting that came to follow up on those where the city staff was trying to work cooperatively with the vendor to get the product that we believe that we're contracting for. And you see over and over again, the same types of issues come up without resolution. So, it's really, it's that that, at the end of the day, that brought us here, asking you to terminate the contract so that we can go out, rebid, and try this again, and hopefully be a little bit more successful going forward.
Explain about the 30, did you say that the staff has invested about $34 million in time and equipment?
Thirty-four thousand?
Thirty-four thousand.
Thirty-four thousand dollars. Yeah, that's in time, having one of our crew supervisors check up on the work that's going, and certainly, there's a portion of that that comes with any time you outsource the work, but what it boils down to is almost a half of an FTE that we have spent in trying to administer this contract, and that's chewing up by itself a significant portion of the savings that we thought we were going to achieve when we got into this.
So, I don't remember the contract, but it's a five-year contract, but what's our out clause?
It's actually, and Dan Maron's going to correct me if I'm wrong, it's a one-year contract with an option...
An option for five, or for four.
For only two, most of the three-year contract.
All right. Well, what's our out clause?
Just 30 days.
You don't like what they're doing, just say, "We're done"?
Yes, that's one of the options in the contract, and I think that was the recommendation of the attorney when this was discussed, was it's the simplest clause within our contract, just in that we are allowed to cancel the contract for 30 days for any reason with written notice.
I noticed the slide there that said air sweeper, I've never seen an air sweeper before, aren't those supposed to be using water on all of the sweepers?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Lawson?
I spent most of the weekend reading the contract and the bid documents and the letter and all of this, and it does say in the bid documents, you can use an air sweeper.
Yes, it does.
So, that, to me, as long as it's in compliance with working and the working order, then that's legitimate.
Do you have, let me ask you a question, do you have air sweepers, or are they all, the sweepers you have all use water?
We have one air sweeper we use for leaf season.
For leaves, okay.
The remaining are mechanical brooms.
The other two are mechanical brooms.
Okay, so the pictures we saw up here were not leaves, they were using the wrong sweeper?
The picture that had the dust, it was a clog filter, and it was brought to the attention midday, and it was corrected Bart...
That day.
Okay, well, and I'm sorry, we'll bring up the microphone when we're done here, because we'll have some questions, I'm sure.
These pictures, is there anything with the date or after the last meeting?
Okay, Ms. Ready, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I guess I was going to ask, Mr. Hamlin, if, are the pictures the entirety of your presentation, or do you also have some?
Yes, no, that was the entirety of the presentation, all those pictures.
I just wanted to make sure we were getting...
These pictures here are the, part of, just screenshots from some of the billing that we get, showing that, on this section is showing that, part of the billing is showing the sweeper being in Reno and being in Floriston, California, and being over in Truckee.
And they were supposed to be here?
Well...
They can use it all over the place, but it'll show that the GPS is on or off. I've asked to get reports just for the on, and that's when the sweeper, the broom's actually turning and sweeping. So, in this report, it shows they were sweeping in Truckee, so there's 13,000 line items, so I have to go through each line and say, "This one was in Truckee and it was on," so I'd have to remove it.
Oh, so they were billing us when they were in Truckee?
Well, we don't know, but we're just doing our due diligence to make sure that our billing and what, you know, they say they're doing is accurate to what we're actually paying for.
Okay.
So, we had a meeting, I brought it to Joe's attention, so then he was going to fix that and just show me, it's just sweeping in Sparks only, and just GPS on only.
Okay, Mr. Smith's got a question.
A couple of questions if I can, it's, I think, Joe, you mentioned that we only require to do our streets every other month, is that correct? Or, I'm sorry, you said that it was, we're actually on our third cycle, is that correct?
Residential streets.
Residential streets, we only do every other month.
Correct.
So, there'd be no reason why we're on the same street two weeks in a row then, right?
Should be.
Other than for a resweep or something like that?
A resweep, if they didn't do that good a job, or they had to got called back, then they'd be back on that street.
Four times in two weeks, would that be way beyond?
Yep.
That'd be...
Usually, we'd resweep and call them, they sweep the street today, Dan will go out and checks it tomorrow, he would call them tomorrow and say, "You need to resweep this street."
So, if the city of Sparks did it four times in two weeks, would that be okay?
No, absolutely not. Unless they, like I say, unless he had to go back and resweep, or that's where he's finished up, or we got another call.
So, you're aware of my complaints, right?
Absolutely, yes.
You understand, I had a sweet sweeper on my suite, on my street, with the city of Sparks logo on it, four times in two weeks?
Was it done, I'll have to find out, was it during leaf season? If it was during leaves, they'd just stay in the older part of town, so I don't know. I'd have to ask the sweeper property that question.
That's the questions I'm asking, because we're here talking about a contract that says every other month, "I have you four times in my street and you four times in my street in two weeks."
The contract is for routine sweeping, not for leaf sweeping, nor is it for sand sweeping after storms. So, our sweepers would go out as many times as they need to go out to try and get the leaves picked out.
And I understand it, I'm trying to get to the base of the issue with the contract. I feel like I'm in the middle of a divorce here. I feel like we have a marital dispute, and it's some real anger going on on both sides of the other party, and I don't know who come to counseling yet to handle this issue, so I think we're going to have to be counselors here today and look at this thing. I think there's more going on here than just pretty pictures and stuff about what's going on, I think we have some real issues. I'm trying to go back and look at the documentation. According to the stuff in our report here, September 27th was the first meeting.
That's correct.
So, the contract started July 1st. Three months later, the first meeting took place to go ahead and discuss issues. So, really, we've only been working on this thing for three months.
Two months.
Two months.
We'd had phone conversations during July and August, and so, when I noticed that things weren't being taken care of just over the phone, that's when I said, "We need to start having monthly meetings," and I thought, "Stop sitting down one-on-one together that we could get..."
And that's what I'm trying to understand, we've had a September, an October, and a November meeting.
December and January.
A December meeting.
And a, yeah, January meeting.
Okay. Have they made any progress?
They've made some progress.
Okay.
But the billing that I've asked for, like December, didn't give me half the GPS reports that I wanted, so I'm still having problems with GPS and matching up what they've actually swept to what they're billing me for.
Okay, so the month of December, they were turning the bill in January, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Twenty-one, what's today, the 23rd? So, 23 days ago, they turned in a bill, and you haven't got what you wanted out of that.
That's correct.
And so, and this is their first billing by GPS?
No, no, they've had GPS billing all along, it's just that the information that I wanted has been incorrect, what I've asked for. So, November's going wrong.
So, December's not, and so, I mean, do they have the ability to give you the billing the way they want to?
Yes.
The way you want to?
Yes.
Okay, and how long will it take for you to get the billing for December? Because I'm sure there's bills for November not paid yet.
That's correct, because I can't get the GPS, they said they swept 365 miles, but they don't have the GPS on, they gave me a whole stack, you know, it's GPS report, and it shows it being off. So, I can't tell if the sweeper's just driving back and forth dumping or getting water, or if he's actually sweeping, I don't know that. So, I have to go line by line and take out, every time the sweeper went over eight miles an hour, I got to deduct that mileage out of what the total is on here. And there's 13,000 line items that I got to go through.
All right, can we find a way to resolve the billing issue? I mean, it's obvious that they got a GPS, is there any way that you can take and re-dissmit that report with the exact GPS information that he wants on there?
What we've done for that month of December, we run three units in the city of Sparks.
Why don't we, why don't we have you come down so we can get you on... Because I think when you take these problems one at a time, of what needs to be done...
I covered the GPS.
Okay.
I forgot his name.
Okay, okay. When you get done speaking, I'm going to have you fill out a card, okay?
We run...
Okay, one second, Ms. Ready's got a question. Okay.
So, I definitely want you to have the opportunity to speak, so...
Thank you.
But I do feel as if where we're taking this as a council is trying to micromanage staff's item-by-item recommendations on this contract. And if we want to go there, I can go along for the ride. But I think rather than going into depth on each item, that we should be pinpointing our concerns, allowing staff to either defend their recommendation or accept a different recommendation, allowing the contractor to respond, but not getting into the micromanagement of the contract. I don't want to see us sitting up here figuring out, "How do we get to GPS billing?" Frankly, I think that's a little ridiculous. We've got professionals who've hired professionals, either we can resolve that relationship or we can't, but I don't believe that it should be our role. So, before we go too far into, I mean, if we can keep it succinct as to, "This is what we think is wrong, this is what we think," and not problem-solving from the dais, because I'm not sure that that's appropriate. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Lawson?
I just want to, I'm going to address your letter, and, you know, obviously, you guys are experienced at this. It says that you've got a great resume. I don't accept, and I read through the letter, and I had to read it again, and I read it again, and the more I read it, the more I kept saying, "There's excuses at every turn here." I counted 13 of them. I mean, that's how in-depth I got with this, and I don't want to do that.
Thank you for getting in-depth on it.
Well, I don't want to do that, I have much better things to do. Now, there should be no reason in the world why you can't have a working GPS, period. And I don't want to hear any more excuses. There's going to be a storm on the, over the pass, BS, get them on an airplane, get their butts out of here. You can, there's a zillion places, we can have two people right here in town, can hook you up with a GPS tomorrow. So, there's no reason, no excuses. I'm going to vote to continue your contract, but I don't want to see this, I don't want to see you guys back here again.
Just to let you know, sir...
Fix the problems.
They're fixed.
Get it done now, and let's, we'll review it again at the end. But it's irritating to have a so-called professional company come in and do excuse after excuse after excuse. That wouldn't work in my business.
I understand.
None of my customers would accept that. Why should I accept it? It's the citizens' money, it's not my money. It's not Ed Lawson that's mad at this, I'm mad for the citizens, that our $100,000 is not going to the right thing. So, let's get it worked out, get it done. Thank you.
Okay. Joe, did you want to respond?
Yes, real quick, just to let the city of Sparks know, we're running three units, two mechanical, one regenerative air, all GPS has worked now. The one regenerative air that we were running that wasn't working in December, there was a supplemental bill for the amount of $7,000 of daily hand write-ups, just to know what routes we were in, how many miles we swept. Contract sweeping has waived those costs, just for the city to know and see what we did sweep. We're not looking to get paid because we knew the GPS was not working, so we're not looking to get paid. And that is in savings, the dedication that contract sweeping has to the city of Sparks. We uphold our word on what we're going to do. The GPS issues have been out of our hands because we don't, we're not GPS experts, we don't install them. We're relying on a new company, the latest, greatest technology to be installed into these units, and it hasn't been what we thought it would be. So, we're having our own discussions with these people, but it shouldn't be taken out on the City of Sparks, and we understand that, but they are all working and up to par as we speak.
Okay, Ms. Ratty.
I, I just have one question for the contractor. Do you stand behind the quality, you know, whether we can track where you are or not, do you feel like the streets of Sparks have been clean to the quality that they should have been over the last six months?
Bart is my day-to-day manager, and I'd let him answer that.
Yes, I do feel, in my opinion, the streets have been swept, the city looks better, and, like you said, you're not here to reconcile, we're not here to point fingers, but yes, in my opinion, the streets are swept, to, by the time the driver is done, is the best way to say it, by the time the driver's done with that route that day, the streets are in great shape, yes.
Okay. So, that's actually not the answer that I was looking for, because my experience has been, since this contract was taken over, my, the volume of complaints that I have had about the appearance of the city have increased, and that the performance has been subpar. Now, if you're here saying, "Yeah, you know, we haven't quite gotten there, but I think we can get there because we've had these series of issues," I would've felt better about that, because there would be some acknowledgement about, "We're not where we need to be, and this is where we need to get." So, what you're saying is actually not reflective of the experience that I'm having with the citizens of Sparks. So, I'm actually, on the other side, I am gonna vote to terminate the contract, because I feel like that's what the city deserves, is that we get to a point where we have the city clean. I don't care about the GPS, I don't care about any of those things, I care about the outcome, that the streets are clean.
I'd like to clarify a few things.
Would you give your name for the record, please?
My name is Bob Woodikine, I'm the general manager of contract sweeping. I've been with, associated with this business since 1978. There are things we have control over, the things we are not. There are pictures that you've seen up there, where we're making one pass in order to clean the street, you have to make a second pass. The pictures taken between those passes, I have no control over that. If you have complaints over your residents, I have no control unless you tell me who's complaining, what street they're on, so I can rectify it, and see for myself if there's a problem. We go out, we check our routes, we GPS our routes, we know where they are, we know what speed they're going at, so they can do an adequate job. I'm not saying we haven't had problems, and we're not gonna have problems in the future, but we rectify them if they do come up. We deal with them on an on-call basis, because we've been in the business for 54 years. We sweep over 13,000 curb miles a month. We are the most professional company in Northern California, and in Reno, Sparks, Nevada, that you'll ever find to support your city, or your needs, or your wants. Without people like ourselves, that not only relocate and build a business in your yard, hire your people, your neighbors, work for other companies up here, as example, Granite is one of our biggest customers up here, besides the City of Sparks. We're not here just to please the residents, we're here to build a business with your clientele base, just as much as our clientele base. And by doing this, it enhances all our positions. And we wouldn't be here with this number if we didn't give a care about what we do here. And I'm not looking at excuses. I changed from Teltrack to Trimble, that was my decision. I went with the company that was digital, not analog. They had problems, but they promised me the world when they bought into the system. It didn't work out, but yet, we still provided the best service possible, whether the unit had GPS or didn't have GPS. We're here to work with your people and your residents who pay the bills. End of comment. Open for questions.
And I appreciate your passion for your business, and I am certain that you are doing that effort, but what I'm saying is that, before this change, I didn't have complaints. Now, I have complaints. And I get that, that you have the right to have, to know what that complaint is, and to go back and to address that complaint, but before, I didn't have the complaint. Now, I'm not saying the city was perfect...
Maybe they've never seen a clean street before.
Well, I'm saying that, that I didn't have this, and I'm not gonna...
I don't know, but unless we know of the complaint, and I have not received or seen any written complaints on a specific street, other than a generic photo.
We contacted Mr. Williams, the supervisor, and he was called. 12:05, complaint, Vice Island Drive, 30 miles an hour, skirting leaves all over, Dan will call Bart. December 8th, sweeper on Los Altos, didn't have rear broom on, leaving material all over the roadway. Again, Dan will call Bart. So, Dan will come with a complaint, he, we log it.
Most of the complaints we get from citizens would be verbal, you know, so, I don't think they, they need to be written, you know, I, we can end this discussion, I think, and then, you know, to me, looking at some of those pictures, not only did one driver let you down, but then, you know, it's like sitting in a truck and driving around and things, and you just stop and get out of the truck and pick up, and that wasn't happening.
I'm not saying we didn't have problems, okay? All I'm saying is, is the fact that we are where we are and who we are because of our reputation.
Okay.
Okay, and that's more important to us, as one of the owners said, than hand-doing our, our sweeping, where we kept logs of it, and we passed that information out, just to let you know what the cost factor was, that wasn't charged to you. It wasn't in the final bill.
Okay.
And that was before we had the GPS installed. And, like I say, I take full blame for the GPS, but I tried to give the City of Sparks the best GPS system that's available out there. And there's a lot of them, and a lot of them are very inferior.
Okay, thank you. Neil?
I'd like to go back to one comment that the gentleman made, that actually does not sit well with city staff at all. And that is the comment that perhaps Sparks residents hadn't seen a clean street before. I, I think that's, that's underhanded, it's a cheap shot, and I...
I know it that way.
Well, sir, I disagree, I think that's exactly what you meant.
No.
And, and here we are, another point as to, why do, why does the city wanna continue to do business with a vendor who is not performing?
Okay.
And continues to not perform.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, I was hoping to get a chance to go ahead and finish answering my questions I had 20 minutes ago, you know, and I'm not trying to micromanage, I'm looking at complaints that staff had in the contract, and I'm asking, I understand now that the November invoice that staff put in the bill, and, you know, that is waived, right? That invoice is not, not...
There was two bills, yeah, one with GPS...
That one's not active. We paid the other one, so...
The other one we paid, but the second one was waived.
So, we're on a December one that needs to be paid, is that correct? It needs to be figured on out?
No, the November one, they gave me two GPSs, one GPS was on, the other GPS was all off, so, when he sent me the bill, 365 hours on that invoice, he's billing me for. And, and that's, and that's the sweeper that doesn't have the GPS on it, so I couldn't tell if he really did sweep 360 miles. So, in the November bill, that, that is on there, he's not waiving that. The GPS not being off on that machine, he did not waive.
What date will the GPS be resolved?
GPS is resolved, doesn't finish there, it is working actually on 12, as of December 12. The, that, that bill he's speaking, Dan's speaking about, through, the GPS was working, but there was a switch inside the sweeper that it just didn't turn on, on the computer. But, it was showing the miles swept, the speed the sweeper was doing, but the button on the computer, between the sweeper and computer, just didn't say on. But, it was moving and calculating miles and hours.
Do you feel this, the GPS position is resolved?
You know, if you're gonna ask questions, I'm gonna be honest, you have to come down here to answer them, okay?
No, I don't feel it's been resolved at this time.
So, how do you, you know, okay, so, that's it, you reported we had $34,000 in staff time to handle this problem since July 1st.
That's for six months, correct.
What did we budget for supervision on this thing?
We didn't budget anything. We didn't, we knew we'd be checking it, but not, not as much as it was, so that's why we decided to go ahead and start checking it, just to see what we were spending on it.
So, we budgeted nothing for supervision of a contract?
We already had our, our crew supervisor, and he was just gonna go check it, yes.
But, how many hours a month was he gonna go check?
We were hoping maybe like a half hour a day, or maybe an hour a week, maybe, just to...
So, an hour a week?
Yeah, we didn't wanna use GPS to be a big brother and follow these guys around. It was like, more like a complaint, and was a sweeper there, and then when we did start getting complaints, it was like, okay, now we gotta start going out there and checking on these guys. And so, that's when we started checking on them, was when we started noticing all the deficiencies, and then we started keeping record.
Okay, then, my last question, I'll, it's my last question. I see all these minute notes and everything else in here. When was the first time we gave written notice that the contract was in trouble, that you were going to request to divorce this contract?
The December meeting.
The December meeting?
Yes.
You, you gave them a written notice in December that you were gonna cancel their contract?
Yes, we had a meeting with city attorney, Neil Crutts, and we drafted the agreement. The next meeting, I submitted it to them.
Do you have that, that letter, Dan?
No, no, I don't.
Yeah, because I don't have, I don't show anything in here about a letter being issued, and that letter said that, and, and, so, the letter was issued on December 7th, it said, "In how many days these corrections aren't done, we're gonna pull the contract."
We were just telling them we're gonna go to council in 30 days.
So, you didn't give them notice that you're gonna cancel their contract?
Yes, we did.
Yes, according to this, they did, they gave 30 days notice. Okay, if I'm showing them my time, that December 7th, if you gave, did you give them 30 days to make corrections?
Yes.
Okay, it takes 17 days to get on this council agenda.
Okay.
So, you had it on the council agenda before the 30 days were up. I, what I'm saying, I guess overall here, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a contractor who's got 16 cities that he's working for, I'm looking at, so, what I, what I'm seeing is, you know, divorce-type stuff, you know, that, you know, bring all these pictures and everything else, I, I got pictures of myself on the City of Sparks, Spark Street Sweepers, if, if you want. I mean, I, I could give you those things. You know, and then they'll match those same pictures on up there, but I'm, I'm not gonna sit down and get into that, I'm saying, look, are we being fair here? You know, are we gonna sit down and work out these differences and try to make a contract work out? Or are we gonna say, "No, we're done," and walk away? I, I, I think we're better than that, I think we're a better city, I think we can treat our vendors better than that, our community better than that. We got a pilot program, just sat in a meeting today, Mr. Driscoll can tell you, we're being watched by two other entities, they wanna know what we're doing. They're gonna, they're trying to go ahead and match now, to go to, find a way to do street sweeping more cost-effective. So, we've raised the bar in the entire community, that there are other things to be done here. I think instead of throwing the baby out with the bathwater, give a proper notice, work on the items and things, you know, I think it's a mistake that we ever decided not to put supervision in on a contract. I think, I think in, in all companies, if you're gonna go out and do a contract, your owner has a responsibility to, to do, and there should be some budget for that. Whether it's $34,000 or not, I don't think so, it sounds like a lot of money to go ahead and be, in the first six months to spend. But, I think we can, I think we can find out, give these folks a chance to go ahead and get their stuff done. I know that you think you've given them a chance, but it looks to me, you had 90 days going on before the first, first meeting was taking place, so really, we're, we're talking less than 90 days here that we've had to go ahead and resolve this issue, and I think we can do better, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, staff.
Ms. Ratty.
I just wanted to apologize to Councilman Schmidt, I didn't very gracefully state what I was trying to say, and I did completely redirect his line of questioning, so, it was inappropriate, and I apologize.
Okay.
Sure, do you?
For the record, the invoice that is waived, it's invoice 1-8-3-3, and it's $7,672, and that is waived. And then, just to touch base, as, as far as city complaints, I am curious, have you noticed city complaints reduce, you know, since we, there's been more proactive efforts to get it right, and working as a team? Or is it increased?
Unfortunately, I'm sorry to say, it hasn't. Increased, now, I would also add, of course, we had the driest December on record during leave seasons, you know, I, I allow for, it's tough, it's tough out there, but unfortunately, my experience is that they're increasing.
If it means anything, you know, we're not giving up, you know what I mean, that's what I wanna know, so then, what I, what actions we need to take on the streets to make it better.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, Neil, any, anything, Mike, Mr. Kerrigan?
Yeah, you know where I wanna go with this, is I, I really, I trust staff, this is the first time we kinda outsourced something for street sweeping. You guys do have a good resume, I agree with that, quit making excuses and just do the damn job, okay? You know, staff is unhappy with you, obviously, but, from my point of view, if we have to go out for another bid, what's, I don't know who it's gonna be, and, you know, I, I don't know, and I, I think we've invested some time, and so, I'm on the, on the side of saying that we've invested time with your company, you better get all the changes right, because if you come in front of us again, I will vote to terminate your contract, I promise you that. I probably shouldn't say that, the attorney's gonna get upset, now, because I'm predisposed. But, if this happens again, maybe I will vote to do that, okay? Let me clarify that, okay? There's a strong chance on my, but, I just want, I mean, we're, we've, you know, we've invested time, I don't want staff to be babysitting you guys, because it's costing us money, and the reason we went with you is to save money. And once again, Ed said it before, it's not my money, it's the citizens' money, but I do wanna go on the record saying I haven't had any complaints called in to me, so, and, but I haven't seen a street sweeper in my neighborhood either. So, they're all in, you know, so...
Mr. Crutts, anything else?
We will carry out whatever direction it is you give us here today.
Okay, any further comments or questions? Looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson.
I'm gonna move that we don't take any action on that, 6.5. That's all we need to do, right?
Or to continue the contract, I guess would be a better motion.
Okay, then we'll move to continue the contract, and I would just ask that Sean and Neil just bring it back to us, the month before the expiration of the contract, if these issues haven't been worked out. I'm in Mr. Kerrigan's boat, is a strong recommendation, you know, that we, we can, I, I just think we've got too much invested at this point, and I think everybody gets, has tough times when it's something new or different, new, you know, area. I'm not making excuses, because I hate them, I hate them with a passion. So, I'm just saying, I'm giving you the benefit of the doubt, and as Mr. Kerrigan says, I hope to never see you again. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt.
I'll second that motion if I can, and just to put it, I don't wanna wait until a month before the contract's over with. If staff has issues, you know, I wanna see them in a, in a formal report to us, you know, to, you know, these are the things going on, and, you know, I, I don't want to wait another six months and have staff come up here and say, "These guys never fixed any of their problems the last six months," because if it does come in front of us again, I think you know where it's gonna go, but I, I'd like to have some reporting from staff to make sure we know what's, what's happening with it. Thank you.
Mr. Kerrigan.
Yeah, thanks, I'm gonna support that motion, but I'd like also to say, for staff, bring it, bring something back in like the next month, like February, to see if they're at, if they are taking care of the problems. Do you understand where I'm going with that? So, they have the, our staff has sent you some problems, take care of them before the next meeting, because I don't wanna wait six months either. And if you come back, if staff recommends coming back and saying, "They haven't done it," you know, you can bring it back.
I, I would offer that staff could come back at your second meeting in February, that would be a month from now.
Right.
Would give us several more weeks under our belt with a status report.
That's...
I'll amend the motion to reflect that.
Does the secretary agree? Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, that's fine, a staff report's all I'm looking for, we do it monthly, I mean, a staff report, I don't know if you're gonna come back with a recommendation in February to, to cancel the contract, I think a staff report's a good way to go, because then, at least we're aware, and it can make you make the recommendation, "Well, you need to cancel to cancel this thing now, or something else. But let's do a staff report and increase that communication on these things.
Mr. Adams?
If I could make yet another suggestion, in order to address Councilman Schmidt's concern over the 30-day notice, that this matter simply be continued for 30 days, because what you're asking staff to do is come up with a new agenda item. And I don't want to obfuscate the matter right now by saying, well, we didn't get notice the first time because of Councilman Schmidt's observation that, hey, you didn't give them a full 30 days. If you hold this matter in abeyance for 30 days, essentially, what I hear the council saying is that if these problems, these issues are not abated within 30 days, when you want the staff to come back, then I've heard too positive, maybe, kinda, sorta, we might go along with the staff's recommendation then. But to give the city council an opportunity for a full and complete hearing on this, protecting your rights is in the contract. And to avoid staff having to sit down and create yet another agenda item, that this matter simply be continued 30 days to let the city council reconsider or fully consider the matter at that time.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion then. And we'll just, I'll make a new motion, if that's all right.
You withdraw the second? Mr. Schmidt?
I have a choice. Second, the withdrawal's a first. It has to...
And then we'll just move to continue this till the second meeting of February. I don't know if it's exactly 30 days or not, but the second council meeting of February.
Okay. We have a motion to continue. Do we have a second?
No.
Okay. You want a second?
Second.
You have a second from Ms. Ratty? Any further discussion? Ms. Ratty?
I was going to say that I wasn't gonna be able to support the motion, but I can obviously, as the secretary, I'm going to support continuing it, so...
No, you can go.
Perhaps it's not obvious.
I think you've done it before.
Hey, hey. Pick on Julia.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? And I will say that I'm with everybody else up here. You need to get your act together, so we can continue with this contract, because if you don't, we won't. Okay, all in favor? No further discussion? Please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, we'll see you in about a month from now. Thank you. Okay?
Do we know what that's due?
We do.
It'll be the second, no, it'll be the fourth Monday in February. Okay. Public hearing and action items unrelated to planning and zoning, there are none. Number eight, planning and zoning public hearings and action items, there are none. Comments? I'll open up for public comments. Would anybody like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Comments from the city council and city manager? I'll just have one comment. The reason why Mr. Mayor is not here today, or Mayor Martini, is he's gonna be a grandfather sometime today. It may have already happened, so he's at the hospital. Any other comments? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I do have some announcements regarding some vacancies for service by the public in our community. There is one vacancy on the Civil Service Commission for a term which will expire on June 30th, 2014. There's also one vacancy on the Sparks Planning Commission. The appointment is for a four-year term through December 31st, 2015. If you are interested in serving on either of these community committees, please complete a volunteer application, which is available on our city website. You simply click on City Services, then on Volunteer and Get Involved, and then fill out the City of Sparks Volunteer Applications. We will be accepting applications for the next two weeks, at which time the applications on file will be forwarded to the mayor, and then further to the city council for your selection. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I did go out of order with public comments. I'll open it back up for public comments. Anybody wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. No more comments from the council? Then we are adjourned.